Evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 8th, 2023 Plan Board Meeting. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Steve?
Chairman John Currie.
Here.
Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Nancy Gerbino.
Here.
Ken Christensen, absent. Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince is absent. And Christopher Zaberto.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the minutes from October 11th, 2023. Any discussion? Make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second is Resolution Number Correction. Just for the record, I'll just read what it is. It's to change Resolution Number 2023-12, which is a granted conditional preliminary and final subdivision approval, for a lot line change to 3 Narcissus Drive and 28 Juniper Drive to Resolution 2023-13, since 2023-12 was all previously assigned to another project. It's pretty simple. Any bad?
Make a motion to adopt it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our first project tonight is 8 Anita Road. It's an application for a lot line adjustment for properties at 8 Anita Road and 4 Anita Road, Town Map 27.05-1-19 and Town Map 27.05-1-20-1. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Andy Chung. I'm the engineering consultant for my client, David Sullivan.
I need him at the mic.
He's just behind you. Is that better? Okay.
You're gonna have to work that as a lecture.
Okay.
There's a stick you can use to point if you want. Hanging, hanging. There you go. And it's got a red end on it, too, so you can...
Probably better if I do this. So, again, my name's Andy Chung. I'm the engineering consultant for David Sullivan. He is residing at 8 Anita Road, which is this parcel right here. What we're planning on doing, what he's planning on doing, is purchasing a sliver of 4 Anita Road, which is located here. The total acreage to be transferred to 8 Anita Road is .17 acres, which would make 8 Anita Road a total acreage of 0.92 acres total. In addition to... I've also included all of the setback distances and all of the zoning regulation requirements on this plan.
I have a question. Perhaps it was overlooked, but in my folder, the proof of taxes paid was included for 8 Anita Road, but the 4 Anita Road, the proof of taxes for that parcel was not included. Nor the...
You're correct.
Unless it was overlooked.
Is that on? Okay.
Easy enough to get...
We can, yeah, we can request that.
It's easy enough.
Yeah, I don't think that that should hold up necessarily the scheduling of a public hearing, but we can request the applicant to provide that.
Yes. Normally, we see both of them when we do this.
Dave, any other comments?
Yes.
Okay. No, just that the application meets the criteria for the abbreviated review process. So, it would be my suggestion, schedule a public hearing. And if you'd like, you could direct staff to prepare resolution for the next meeting.
And then just for clarity, just contingent on proof of the taxes, for which one was it? For 4 Anita Road?
Yeah, 4 Anita Road is Sheet 27.05-1-20.1.
And if the board's okay with that, we'll schedule a public hearing for the next meeting with a resolution to be presented at that meeting. Just show us that and we'll go forward.
Okay.
I'm not speaking for the board.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay. So, I think we have to make a motion. Don't we, to use the abbreviated process, don't we?
Yes, but whether it is, yes.
Because we're gonna schedule a meeting, a public hearing for the next meeting, correct? So, I make a motion that we do the abbreviated review process on this application.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. We'll see you next month. And for the record, next month is, I believe it's the 12th. I'm sorry, it's December 13th. So, bring the tax and we'll do a public hearing and we'll have a resolution prepared.
I'll probably have to try to get that document before.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, just coordinate with our office.
Yep.
Very easy.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Sure. Night. Don't forget the McDonald's. Okay, good night. Next on our agenda is Glenida Realty Site Plan Application, 259 Route 100, Town Map 28.06-1-15. For the record, I just wanted to let everyone know what this is. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing abandoned single-family house and redevelop the site, new two-story-high self-storage facility, approximately 22,000 square feet per floor, and associated site improvements. For the record, the property is located on the west side of New York State Route 100, approximately 2.28 acres in size, and it's located in the Office Light Industrial Zone and in the Groundwater Protection Overlay District. And I, for one, you can't do this fast enough for me, but that's just my opinion. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Steve Raible. I'm with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberger &amp; Stout on behalf of Glenida Realty. With me tonight is Rick Donardo from Ownership and Lauren from Engineering, Alfonzetti Engineering. So, I won't reiterate what the chairman just explained other than to just highlight for any listening in who may not be aware of some of the history here. The property is now in the OLI Office Light Industrial District. It was recently rezoned from the MFR 100. Previously, it had been contemplated that there would be a somewhat significant multifamily development on the property, but the thought being that this site, being located, kind of convergence of residential, industrial, and commercial, would make more sense as a low-impact self-storage facility. So, as you can see here, the building has been designed to appear residential in nature. It's taken cues from historical carriage houses. And the idea is to create a high-end, teak, climate-controlled self-storage facility. As opposed to the prior multifamily, no impacts on schools, significantly less impacts on utilities, significantly less impacts on traffic. We've also designed stormwater, which Lauren, if the board would like, can walk you through in a moment. And before I turn it over to Lauren, I would note that we have tonight, though it was not made a part of your submission package, our initial landscaping plan, which we understand is required. The only other procedural note I would give is that we are coming to you now with variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals for north and side, north and south, side yard vegetated buffer setbacks. So, with that, would the board like it if our engineer walked you through the stormwater?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Lauren, when you're done, we'll put the landscaping plan up for them to see. All right? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lauren from Alfonzetti Engineering. So, for our proposed septic system, we are having it located outside of the groundwater protection area. Oh, you could just put it up there. So, we have the proposed septic system that's located outside of the groundwater protection area. And we also have infiltration system that's capturing the runoff from the pavement that's also located outside the groundwater protection. And we have a separate infiltration system that's capturing the runoff from the roof. Those are all sized for 100-year storm event. And we have an emergency overflow that's located on either west side of the property.
Just a stick hanging, and if you can use that, you can point. There you go.
You're gonna have, I'm sorry, but you're gonna have to look. They're not gonna hear it. The mic. To the mic, yeah.
Yeah, just turn the mic, it'll be all right.
Yeah, there's emergency overflow located right around here. That's the existing low point of the site. And all of them are designed for 100-year storm event. Any other questions about the civil engineering aspect of the design, I'd be glad to talk about it?
The only thing I see that's been questioned, and it wasn't originally questioned by myself. The question was brought to me, is that the parking right now is behind the building and to the front right, as I'm looking at the drawing. It was suggested that that parking at the front right should be moved along the side or to the rear, if possible, so that there's no view of parked cars from the road.
We have a landscaping plan that provides some buffer around the front and the side.
Good time to segue into that.
Yeah, we don't need that reminder.
Now, we want it gone, gone, quickly.
Take it, Frank. Thanks. So, I'm not a landscape architect. I'm not gonna speak in any great depth about the genus and species of the plant. But the clear direction from the Zoning Board of Appeals was that we are to provide dense landscape buffers, particularly in those side yard areas where we cannot provide the required 50-foot vegetated buffer. And within that dense planting, make use of evergreens as well. So, we've provided what we believe to be a significant landscaping plan that goes all around the property. You can see the heavy planting on the north and south as well as taking advantage of that thick buffer area to the rear, which would be the west side. We hear the question about the parking in the front. I think it's something we can look at. I don't know if we'll be able to fit it within the site based on certain constraints. Obviously, we want to preserve that green space in the rear, which abuts a residential neighbor. And we want to make sure that we've provided adequate area for the septic and the well. But we can certainly look at the issue for you and have a response when we come back next month.
That would be great. Thank you.
Did the zoning board give any color as to why they wanted the parking in a different location? Did I understand that correctly? Was the zoning board...
I don't think the question was necessarily raised by the zoning board. Not to my recollection.
It was brought to me by somebody on the town board, actually.
Oh, okay. So, I'm still confused. And then, who was it that had made a suggestion? Was it us that made a suggestion to move the parking somewhere else? You said...
No, that was somebody on the town board.
No, not us.
I don't think it was us. It wasn't us.
So, there was no legislative board that asked for that?
No.
We were concerned about protecting the residents behind there, which we considered the most important.
And, okay, and so...
And that's what they focused on. So, they did what we asked.
Okay.
I don't understand why we're not supposed to be cars parked along the road.
Yeah, I mean, so that's where I was going.
At the business grade.
Right, this is an OLI.
Yeah.
What does OLI stand for exactly?
Office and Light.
Right, thank you. And so, I mean, aesthetically, I think with light industry, I would expect there to be cars.
Yes.
And we have a chance to screen the neighbors. That's, to me, it's a little...
I think that's more...
I mean, just down the road, look, we have all the frontage there, so...
Yeah, no, I agree. That's why I wanted to make sure this wasn't a stiff that was put in somewhere that we needed to follow along with. Okay. Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense that we lock a view 100 that's already got Lawton Adams across the street and all the other commercial establishments, gas station.
Stone wall that挡most of the view of the cars.
Right.
From a personal standpoint, you know.
Yes. All right. Thanks for clearing it.
Before we get some more board member comments, do you want to run through planning and engineering comments, if there are any?
So, Mr. Chairman, we prepared a memo. Most of the comments that I had related to the landscaping.
Right.
Which I hadn't seen. So, I'm glad to see that they're focusing on that aspect. And then there are just a couple of other issues. You know, you have a garbage enclosure, which is up towards the front of the site. How is that being screened and handled? And then you've got a gate system at the entrance. How is that being controlled for people who come in and out? And you want to try and avoid queuing, if possible, getting into the site.
So, we did get the memo. We are looking into some specifics on garbage enclosure. And then certainly, as you can see here, to screen plantings as well as the wall. As far as the gate goes, it's accessed by a keypad and intercom. The gate is really intended to be open during the operating hours, when you have staff on site, to avoid queuing. But when closed, it's a keypad and an intercom as well as an app on your phone. The landscaping plan, as you noted, Dave, we're working on. We're gonna finalize this and submit it formally to the board to be part of your record.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question. Is there, if, in the event of heavy snow, where are you gonna put the snow when you plow it? And I'm not sure how wide it is. Like, that corner there where the landscaping is, as I'm looking at it, the upper right-hand corner to the edge of the landscape, it looks tight. Is there a traffic flow? Is traffic gonna go all one way around? And what's going on in the, what looks like parking spaces at the back? If you could explain that area back there.
So, Rick, I don't know if we've talked about snow storage. Yeah, please.
Good evening again. Rick Donardo, Ownership. If I could address the snow. Generally speaking, based on a building this size, we're required to have nine parking spaces for self-storage. So, we have 15, which is still less than 54 that was originally presented for the multifamily. So, our thought process is that for snow, it's gonna be pushed towards the rear. And these rear spots here are gonna be used to stockpile snow. And we'll try and move everything from, on both sides, to the rear. And it should give us plenty of room, as well as the green space there, because the trees are set back a little bit. So, we'll be able to stockpile the snow along the whole rear of the lot.
That's what I was guessing. I just don't want to rely on my guess. And in terms of how wide it is, is the traffic gonna flow in one direction?
There is room for two vehicles there. And at this point, we haven't...
Yeah, there's also room for two at the turn?
There's room for two at the turn.
Okay.
We haven't decided yet on the flow. I think, you know, the engineers will work on that as we get closer to see whatever is a natural flow. It probably makes sense to come in one side and go out the other side, even if there is room for two vehicles, just to avoid those tight...
Could be large vehicles.
Could be large vehicles. With, what we're, the, for the client base that we're targeting this towards, we don't expect to have a lot of large vehicles, large trucks. We're pretty much feel that we're gonna get small trucks and small vehicles through there. There's not any commercial, you know, tenants that are gonna be in there.
So, there will not be a loading dock or some sort of vehicle housing back a vehicle into?
No.
And will this be branded at some point with a franchise partner or...
No, we expect to keep it private. At this point, it's either gonna be carriage house self-storage or summer self-storage.
Would you mind putting the picture of the business back? I have a question that I'd like to ask. Related to the questions we were just discussing about traffic and cars and small trucks and what have you. Let's assume the business exists. And what I'm looking at are a bunch of little garage doors. I'm assuming, I've never used this type of business, but I'm assuming people store things there. And occasionally, they come and visit and put something in and take something out. So, they know where it's stored. They pull up in front of their own door and open it up. And so, there'll be that type of traffic.
Correct, yes.
As well as small trucks and what have you, making deliveries or...
Again, the frequency of commercial vehicles is gonna be very low. You know, our anticipated market is the high-end market, classic car storage or even, you know, the garages lend themselves towards, if you're gonna store furniture, easy access in and out. The number-one thing being stored these days in self-storage is furniture. So, we don't anticipate a lot of traffic there at all once we get the initial, you know...
But there would be occasional.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. While it looks like a beautiful two-story building, am I right in assuming that there is no real second floor?
Well, no, there is.
So, there are two levels of storage?
Two levels of storage, yes.
With an elevator?
To the upper level.
With two elevators.
Get to the upper level.
Elevator. There's an eight-foot... There is an eight-foot entrance in the front as well as the exact same entrance in the rear. Goes to a common hall where there'll be two elevators in the middle.
And are the, are the storage units on the second floor smaller than the ones?
We haven't just done the breakdown yet. We have an architectural firm that specializes in storage. They're gonna do demographic study and see. As you can assume, you know, if you're in Manhattan, five by five is the most popular size. When you get to the suburbs, it's anywhere from five by 10, by 8, and by 20.
And then if I remember correctly, those are faux windows, right?
Yes, they are.
Right. And the stone wall that's, that outlines the front echoes the stone wall that exists at the housing development?
Bonnie Ellis.
Just down the road.
As a matter of fact, if you'd like, I have pictures with me. I could gladly circulate them if you'd like.
There will be a nice uniformity to the overall approach as people drive up Route 100.
If the existing structure burnt to the ground tonight, it would be an improvement. I'm not suggesting anything, Rick. I'm just throwing that out.
This is the stone wall that's currently from the crossing from Ellis Development. We expect to mimic that.
It's attractive right now.
Yeah. Oh, it's gonna be beautiful.
Dave, do you have any more comments?
No, I do not.
Steve?
Chairman, we also issued a memo, kind of an initial completeness review item, just asking for some clarification on some of the stormwater data, mostly, elements that were included on the plan but weren't on the SWIP or vice versa, little mostly cleanup items, and some additional data where we had some questions. Not included in that memo, but things that we would like addressed are confirming adequate separation from the proposed septic system to the well, to the residential property, or the other properties around it. We've had a couple of applications before the board lately where that hasn't been met to the adjacent properties. And then, as well, since this is in the Groundwater Protection Overlay District, there is a requirement in the code for a groundwater protection plan as part of the application. And of course, if the engineer has any questions, please chat to us. Happy to go through.
Steve, can I just ask a quick clar...
Yes.
You want to ensure distance of our proposed septic from the neighbor's well?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. I assume you already have it to your well, so...
Is it premature to talk about a site walk? I mean, I guess, would you be able to stake out the four corners or something like that? Or is that asking too much now?
Gladly do it.
I don't know, how's the board feel?
Do it now before it gets...
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, while we can.
The site's not changing?
No.
Do you have a lighting plan?
I don't. One was submitted.
I think we'll need that at some point.
Lighting plan.
Lighting plan.
Yeah.
You tell us what your availability, I mean, how... I don't know, what more do we want than the four corners and maybe the parking lot or something like that? I'm looking for feedback here.
Yeah.
Maybe, can you tag the property lines? You know, like, just put...
They actually already don't.
Okay, perfect. This way, we see that in relation to...
And they will know, like, the back and the setback is...
Correct.
Right.
And do they need a traffic study?
Yes.
Or no? You guys already gave us a...
Yes, we did.
You did, right? Yeah, I thought so. It was low.
I don't think they need one for this, do they, Dave?
No, the, the, the traffic from a facility like this is so de minimis.
Yeah, that's...
They need to get a permit from DOT, a curb cut perm.
For a curb cut, yeah.
But the traffic volume is not... It's imperceptible.
Yep.
So, you, tell us when you, when you think stuff's staked out.
I think we would, I mean, I imagine we can talk to Ralph about timing to get out. And then, could we coordinate through Wendy?
Yeah, or Dave, either one?
Because it's gonna be the surveyor.
Oh, so you're right, right.
I don't think I'll be able to get it for this Saturday, but the following Saturday, but...
Okay. Eighteenth.
I assume a Saturday is the best day for the board. I mean, or else it could be any.
Yeah.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM?
We couldn't do eight?
Forget it.
Works for me.
Don't forget, it's later earlier now.
Yeah, but I'm still having...
No, that was, I'm going towards the eight.
Yeah, I need a...
Nine on the eighteenth? Is that okay? If that's a problem, just get back on...
We'll coordinate if there's any issue with, but that's what...
That's fine.
Eight, eight, or nine?
I think it's nine.
All right, I'll be there for a portion of it.
Okay.
Stay for about half an hour.
This may seem a silly question, but...
No such thing.
This paperwork has come in. This project has been referred to as Glenida. It's been referred to as its address. It's been referred to, I made a note of a bunch of names that I've seen, but there were three or four names for this project. So, if we can standardize it, kind of pick one name so that all of the documentation sense, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with the applicant on standard.
Yeah, because I did initially think 59 Route 100 was another...
Right, there was Highview Court, Carriage House, and each document has a different name.
Yeah, we work to standardize.
Even if it's AKAs, so we can...
Yeah.
So, what are the...
Glenida.
For now.
For now.
Check back in 10 minutes.
Do you need any, do you want any questions, Todd?
So, procedurally, I don't know if the board is comfortable, considering the setting of a public hearing for next month. Obviously, it would follow the site walk. I guess we'd look for your feedback as, as the process going forward.
I'm gonna look at you. You still have a couple...
From the engineering perspective, I don't know that it's complete. I think, I don't think the applicant has a lot of work to do, but the site visit, a visit, another meeting here that we all determine it's complete. The board has a full application. And I think that that would be the right time.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with that. Sightwalk, sometimes, will generate questions for us that is probably in your best interest that we clear up before a public hearing. Is that...
Yeah, okay. Other than that, I think we are all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Everybody get a chance to look at the calendar for '24?
Yep.
Yes.
If there's any, any discussion, otherwise, make a motion, we accept the calendar that's been presented for December, for 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, a healthy Thanksgiving. Enjoy. We'll see you in December.
A motion to adjourn.
And I was just going to go next. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.